Hello, everyone. If you can hear me, press the alarm clock. That means we're 475. I've got a phone stuck. Can you hear me? I've got a phone stuck. Make sure you pull out the pop pop. I got it right here. I tell you, family and friends, 2020, 2021 is starting to become a really remote time. That's how it started. Families are at... What are we doing? How will we make this work? I am here to say that Samson, Samson and Verona are resilient. We are fighters. We are a community pulling together for one another. We are a community that cares, right? From our elementary school, Baker, Fairo, Highland Springs, Mayford, Montrose, Samson, Seven Pines, Verona and Ward. And let me not forget Donna Ho Elementary School. So from our elementary to our secondary of Elko and Rock, Highland Springs High School and Verona High School. If you're wondering how excited I am, I hope by the time we end today that you know. I know that when we end up into our vernacular, a positive mindset, coupled with productive action, that we are going to be successful in our mission of moving forward. It's that simple. It's really that simple. When we work together, we will win. We will win every single time when we work together with a positive mindset. We know that if each one, teach one, we have a phenomenal opportunity to get to everyone. Whether we're in a school building, whether we're in a parking lot, whether it's in the morning, afternoon or after dark. And yes, I rhymed that on purpose. So guess what? Guess where you are? You are a part of the 2020 Verona District Town Hall live in Verona High School's library. Give my microphone. And for those of you who know me already, you know I don't need a cup of coffee. I will bring my own energy. But I hope that for everyone in your home or in your car or wherever you are, please know that these are challenging times, but these are also times of opportunity. The way that you view something can impact its outcome. I am responsible for sharing information. I am held accountable for communicating. I'm hoping you do the same. It's important that we talk to one another. It's important that we share information. And I can't do it all by myself and therefore have some people here to help me to share updates. These special guests that I am so excited to announce with me today, with you today, include Reverend Tyrone Nelson, Board Supervisor for the Verona District. And I also just want to take a moment to express my gratitude towards Reverend Nelson. He's been fighting in this Verona District since 2011. I am grateful for his pliability, his toughness, for him contacting me with guidance. I am forever grateful for his fight then, his fight now, and I know his fight in the future. Also, I want to know who that other special guest is, don't you? Let me tell you who it is. Ms. Monica Smith Callahan. You don't know who she is? You're about to find out. She is in Henrico County Deputy County Manager for Community Affairs. This specific position is focused on community outreach. It's so important right now. It's so important. And I'm excited to listen to inspiring words from these individuals as well as hear updates from these individuals. So I'm going to pause there and I'm going to turn the floor over to these two individuals to share for me. Reverend Nelson, the floor is yours.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Hopefully you guys can hear me. I am sitting in our boardroom, where one of our boardrooms at the county now trying to do two meetings at one time. So I may not be able to hear everything. But I did want to jump on. First of all, let me shout out our school board rep in the Verona District who has hit the ground running since January 1. Ms. Atkins is all over the place trying to do everything she can to hear from as many people in Samson, Highland Springs, rural, suburban and urban Verona. And so I thank her for making this adjustment, trying to go into this next school year. The first nine weeks we know will be virtual and trying to be as accommodating to all of you. Parents is really a hard place. I do not envy any of the five school board members right now with the choices that they have to make with parents who are worried about their children's safety, but also worrying about the safety of staff, yet trying to work and have their kids at home at the same time. It's very, it's a difficult time, a difficult season. So hopefully we can do everything we can together to look out for each other. One real quick thing I wanted to mention and then Ms. Atkins, if there's anything else you want me to mention that I'm not mentioning right now. We are excited about a brand new Highland Springs High School. We've had some work done to quite a few schools in the district. And so I know most recently Seven Pines Elementary has had, I think, about $13 million worth of renovation work done there. Over the course of the last few years, we've done some things in Mayford and Verona Elementary, I think. I know we, about five, five or six years ago, we put in about $25 million worth of work at Verona High School. And so right now, there is a $100 million project, which will actually be more than 100 million by the time we finish at Highland Springs. We are building the county simultaneously a Highland Springs High School New and a new JR Tucker High School. And so if you have been anywhere near Perm Road in the last couple of months, you see JR Tucker coming out the ground. And if you are over near Airport Drive, then you see the new Highland Springs High School coming out the ground. Actually, I think at the beginning of September, sometime the first week, Ms. Atkins and I are taking a tour of the facility. Walls are going up, the roof is being put up. We are on schedule, from what I hear, for a virtual opening, I mean, not a virtual opening, for a real live opening next September. So September 21, we'll be moving into Highland Springs and JR Tucker. Preferably. So y'all keep on wearing those masks and staying socially distant so we can get our kids back in school, get back, get back in the building. And so that, that's like the main update from a school perspective. We're continuing to do what we can to support schools. We're going to vote on September 8. There's some CARES Act money that came down from the federal government. Some of it, and many of you who've been following the news, there's a proposed, I think, 15 million that goes to schools to prepare for the, for the return of our young people back to school. But we've also set aside $2.5 million to support childcare for employees and citizens at large. And so we vote on it on September 8. Right now, we are trying to work with three organizations, the Y, Henrico Education Foundation Health, and HEP. So if you are in need of childcare once school starts, each one of these organizations will be receiving some money from the county to buy down those weekly costs. So for example, the Y may normally charge $160. It'll be $100 if you sign up and you're a Henrico County citizen. We also have set aside $500,000 out of the 2.5 million for low-income families who may not be able to afford the $100 in the three organizations. And so if you reach out to those organizations, they'll let you know what you need to do to apply for some reduced care. So I think those were the two things, Ms. Atkins, that I wanted to share. If there's anything else you needed me to share, let me know and I can't.
Well, thank you Reverend Nelson. It is a pleasure to have you a part of this town hall. Those are updates that we need to stay abreast of and we're grateful for you sharing those with us. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Monica Smith Callahan, the floor is yours.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Ms. Atkins, for having me this evening and for the opportunity to address our Verona constituents. I am a Verona girl through and through, class of '95, Verona High School. So born and raised in the county and happy to be a part of this convening, but also very happy and excited to be a part of Henrico County Government. As Ms. Atkins stated, I am Monica Smith Callahan. I am the Deputy County Manager for Community Affairs for the county. This is a fairly new position. It is a revamped position of this county manager who wanted to really have someone who had a focus on community outreach here at the county. We know that we have a very diverse county. We have 102 different languages spoke in our schools, which is phenomenal, which makes us, I think, one of the most diverse in our region. And so with that comes a lot of different diverse needs for, from these various communities that make up our Henrico citizens. So, so my role is particularly focused on how do we, as a county government, work with our citizens to help meet those needs? I recently started. I've only been on the job about seven months. So if you do the math, I started right before the COVID hit. So it's been very interesting. A lot of what I thought I would be focused on when I was initially hired, all pivoted and we had to shift. And we really went into response mode to the COVID. Some of you, many of you have probably been able to or been recipients of some of our PPE distributions. We have been doing canvassing, community canvassing events. We actually are about to do our fourth and fifth canvassing events here coming up next week. But we have been out in the community trying to help meet the needs of our citizens using GIS data. We are able to hone in to the neighborhood level to see where our citizens may or may not have access to internet or a car. And in those, where those communities have shown up on our data, we have been very intentional in making sure that we get information out into the bodegas, the corner stores, the laundromats so that families where you are can, can learn of the information and the resources that are available through the county. So in addition to the community canvassing and getting PPE out into the community, we have done food, we stood up a makeshift food pantry, if you will, early on in the COVID response and what we were able to get about 1,300 bags out. We utilized our Henrico County employees who were repurposed during the time of teleworking. And so we've been able to really do some really great things to meet the community's needs. Working with the immigrant and refugee families, working with the school's Diversity and Equity Outreach Office as well as the Family Advocates, the FACE Office. We've been able to really get our tentacles out. We also have a Community Outreach Coordinator on the county side who works for our Public Relations, PR, MS, our Media Services. So that position has really worked closely with my office to translate all the information that we've been able to put out, COVID safety information as well as what, most recently, voting. We want people to be aware of the voting deadlines, when you need to register, if you're not registered, when you have to request a ballot and those steps in that process. And then we are hoping that our registrar will award us two additional Saturdays to allow for in-person voting leading up to the election on November 3. The 2020 census has been a huge part of our outreach efforts as well and getting out information to our community in multiple languages, the importance of completing that census survey and how those numbers help, that data will help contribute to our schools and, and getting municipal money for, for various municipal needs in our locality. So I implore you, if you have not done either, if you're not registered to vote, or if you haven't completed your census, to please look into those things. And, and that's just a huge part, one component of, of the role is the community outreach. Libraries fall in my portfolio. As you know, our libraries on the east end, we have our brand new Verona and we also have a brand new Fairfield. Our Samson Library is available. So that is open right now for curbside distribution of books. But our Verona and Fairfield libraries are both open and available for you to go in. So I, I also encourage you that if your student, while they're out learning virtually or as you're trying to get them acclimated to, to back to school, to visit our libraries, reserve, you can reserve your books online and go in and pick them up safely in a, in a, in a contactless environment. So, all right, Ms. Atkins, was there anything else you wanted me to cover? I don't want to go over too much and take up too much time. Reverend Nelson did a great job of explaining our daycare equity block grant that we have that we, is on the docket for vote on September 8. That is a huge initiative and I'm so proud of Henrico for being willing to use those federal dollars towards supporting our families who have to work and whose, whose kids have to be in school, well, virtually. But those dollars will go towards those daycares and help families pay either the hundred, towards the $100 amount that is, is being charged by those three daycare centers that, or providers that he mentioned, or even taking the, the amount down even further with the $500,000 that has been allotted for our low-income families. So I would encourage each of you, if you need information, please reach out to your, the Family Advocates, the FACE Office or, or if you need information for my office, I can provide that as well in the chat. So, but please reach out, take a look at the three websites, Henrico Pow, Police Athletic League, Henrico Education Foundation, Henrico HEF, and the YMCA. All three have their websites open and are actively taking registrations right now.
Fantastic. Thank you, Ms. Callahan Smith. Families, you've just heard some great information. So we will be using that chat box. So for contact information, if you want to contact Ms. Monica Callahan Smith, her contact information will be in that chat box. Reverend Nelson as well. If you have some questions for him, we'll try to get his contact information in that chat box as well. So has anyone guessed where am I? You know, 2020 has certainly provided some... This town hall was going to be in the stadium at Verona High School. And we realized, hmm, that might not work out so well. Because usually if you ever come to a game, it's little short spurts of announcement. It may not work well if we're having dialogue. So then we decided, let's take it on inside in the gym. Well, you kind of have that same thing with understanding and communicating in a gym. And then because of the brilliance of our planning team and our communication team and all of us working together to make it happen, I am live in Verona High School Library, a place where we would normally have a low-pitched voice. Well, we're not today. This is 2020. And I've been calling it Transformation 2020 for a long time because we have to, we have to learn how to be creative and innovative. And once again, working together gets us there. So next, the adorable, phenomenal woman that I am about to introduce to you. She's been with Henrico County since July of 2018. Myself and my colleagues had the pleasure of renewing her contract just last week. Guys, she's still here with us. And I'm excited as I bring up Dr. Amy Cashwell.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. It is such a joy to be with you and it's a real pleasure to be able to see your smiling faces on the screen. I wish you could see my smiling face behind my face covering, but rest assured, I am smiling despite the challenging circumstances I know we have found ourselves in. And so I'm here to speak to you a little bit about what to expect for the upcoming school year, what do we mean by virtual learning and predominantly online for the first nine weeks? And to help you kind of imagine the best case scenario for how to maximize that experience in your home or wherever you will be learning or your student will be learning. So, and I know before I do that though, I just want to acknowledge that I know this has been a trying time for our families, a trying time for our students. As a mother of two students who also attend Henrico schools, I see much of this experience through the lens of our children. And whether you're a high school age child, a middle school age child or an elementary child, or someone who's supposed to be joining the public school system for the first time as a pre-kindergartner or a kindergartner, I know that there are all kinds of emotions you're experiencing. And so for those who have been with us, you had the loss of the spring, the loss of the end of the school year and all you were expecting. And your expectations for the coming school year have had to shift drastically. And so I just want to echo a sentiment that Mrs. Atkins shared at the beginning of this town hall, which is positivity and the energy you bring to the situation will really determine our outcome in our course. So while we acknowledge a lot of the disappointment and we acknowledge the challenges, I want you to know that the entire Henrico team, your school board, and all of our supports, even as we heard from on the county government side, are all bringing positivity, energy and innovation to the situation to make it the best year possible. And particularly our first nine weeks, which will be predominantly virtual. So what does that mean? Well, in the spring, you might recall that we were in an emergency closure. We didn't know we were going to have to close suddenly and we thought we might even be coming back. And so we had a lot of flexibility in the way you could finish out the year and you did some of that online. This year, we know we're approaching a virtual start. And so the things that you'll be asked to do online are very much structured to mirror the school day you would have in school. So that means things like a course starts at 8 o'clock. You want to do your best to log on at 8 o'clock or 9 o'clock. You want to try to follow your course schedule. You're going to turn in work that may be graded. You're going to experience assignments and the curriculum that you would have had during the school year. And so while your teachers are going to be really flexible with families and students, we want to mirror as much of that real school experience as possible. So students should start each day, whether it's virtual in their home or at a childcare center or in a pod with some neighborhood friends you might decide or plan to learn with. You want to bring your energy to the school day just like you would when you get up and get on the bus and come into a school building. So it is robust, it is structured, and you will be graded on your work. We are going to, we say predominantly virtual because there will be some chances, we hope, as health conditions allow, to bring small groups or one-on-one students into our buildings for limited opportunities. And we're going to target our youngest learners, pre-K through 3, some of our special education students as their IEPs may allow, and some of our students who are learning English for the first time, some of our English language learners and students in some of our specialty courses like career and technical education who may have requirements for their certifications like masonry or some of our other topics that have some real hands-on application. Maybe there's a CPR component required for EMT. So if you fall into one of those categories, you'll plan to hear from your school or your teacher sometime during the first nine weeks as it's appropriate for these sorts of invitations, should you wish to participate. And we're going to work towards a gradual return to school. We're going to keep monitoring health conditions. Your school board and I will get briefed very regularly at our meetings on what are the local health conditions? How are they changing? And do they support the ability to bring more students into our buildings in a safe manner? So that is our goal. That's what we're going to continue to work for and know that we are here to support you, family and student support. So computers, devices, we know to engage in virtual learning, everybody needs one. And we have one for every student. And so we've begun our device distribution. If you don't have yours yet, your opportunity is coming soon. And I hope you'll take advantage of getting your device so that you'll be ready to learn. Also wifi hotspots for those who may need them. School supplies. We know that many of our families rely on assistance and getting the supplies they need. We have been conducting school supply drives and we're still doing that in the community. So if you need assistance getting supplies, you'll be able to contact your school or work through our Family and Community Engagement Department so that we can get you any needed materials that you may not have been able to access. Meals. Everybody needs to make sure that their nutrition needs are met in order to be ready to learn. So we want to make sure our students have access to the same quality school nutrition program that they would have had in our school buildings. And we have actually served, I was looking at this number just yesterday, over 600,000 meals since we closed in March. We have not stopped. We continue each and every day to provide these meal service opportunities for our families. And we're going to continue to do that, even though we won't be open. So stay tuned for more information. Our distribution of times and places may change to better meet your needs. That will happen during the school year. But breakfast and lunch, school nutrition program, we're going to continue that service. We already heard a great update on childcare. We're working to help plug our families into those resources that we know they may need. So that's what online for the first nine is going to look like, some highlights there. Now I want to share a few tips on what you can do to make the most of virtual learning. So the first thing is creating a quiet space that will allow you to focus. It doesn't have to be fancy, it doesn't have to have a lot of materials, but it should be a place where you can concentrate on school. And I think this is a tough one. Having experience working from my home, I know that it's easy to get distracted by all the things you usually do in your house. So whether it's the washing machine or dishes in the sink or other folks or pets in the house, it can be a challenge. So really remember that the school day, you want to be focused on that learning and try to find a space that's quiet and allows you to do that. Be comfortable, be ready to learn and understand how to use the mute button. And that doesn't necessarily mean remaining on mute, but oftentimes you'll mute yourself to make sure that you don't have any background noise. But your teacher may call on you and you may want to be heard. And this has happened to me one too many times. I'll be talking and sharing and realize, oops, I'm still on mute. So I think that must be the most common phrase of 2020 so far was, hey, you're on... So if you've ever been in a virtual meeting, I know that you've heard that or it's happened to you. Make sure you follow up with your teacher for questions. Have any questions or concerns you have with your teacher? Often communicate frequently. You may not be face-to-face in the classroom, but send those emails, parents. Call teachers as you need to, leave messages, you know, even in the virtual format to make sure that if you have concerns they're being heard by your child's teacher, administrator, school counselor. There's a whole team of folks in our schools ready to support you, whether it's virtually or by phone or in other manners. So please don't hesitate to reach out and share your needs and, and let us know how we can assist you. Students, if you're watching, that especially means you. If you're having trouble learning a concept, don't wait. Let your teacher know. If you need help, if you're not sure, remember, this is new for all of us. There are no silly... There are no silly questions. If you're not sure how to navigate Schoology or figure out how to use Microsoft Teams, we're all learning together. Never hesitate to ask questions. We are here in service of you. And last tip I'll give you is to reflect. Think about, what have I learned today? Why did I learn it? And how do I know I've learned it? Keep your, kind of monitor your own progress along the way. And again, stay in touch with your teachers. You can find our whole mission forward plan on our Henrico school site. And the web address is on your screen. So all that information can be found there. Stay tuned to the website. Stay tuned to your school, your assigned school. I know that we are anxious to welcome you back to the school year. And so I appreciate again, Mrs. Atkins offering me an opportunity to share some back-to-school information with you. And know that there's excitement and energy about the new year, even in this unusual circumstance. So thank you so much.
Awesomeness. Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. There's more information to share with each of you. I want to remind you that one of the biggest reasons for a town hall is dialogue with the community. And so we are, have a few more announcements that I am going to make. But then we're going to have open mic and we're going to keep it real. We are going to answer questions, give feedback. And I want to hear, I want to hear how you're feeling. I want to learn how to serve you better. I've been in this role since January. There's a lot for me to learn. And I want to learn that from you. I want to learn about your wants. I want to learn about your needs. And that helps me to serve you. So I am going to remind you to, if you would like to sign up to speak, ask a question, give feedback, use the link in the chat box. So as I go over some more information and acknowledgements, you can have your will spinning on, what is it that you want to say to me? It's that simple. Do you have questions? Do you have concerns? Tears of joy, tears of sadness. Sometimes, you know, joy comes with pain. I want to hear it. And this is the time to do that. So again, if you would like to sign up to speak, please use the link in the chat box. So again, before we get to that open mic portion of this evening, I want to publicly thank the Kindness for Kate organization for donating benches to Newbridge Learning Center, the academies at Virginia Randolph, and benches at all 14 of our schools in the Verina District. So I want to make sure that I give a shout out to them. I also want to publicly acknowledge our principals. They have been doing an extraordinary job. So often, including myself, it's easy to point out mistakes and faults. And sometimes we miss just thanking folks for their success. Being a principal is a hard job. It was a hard job before COVID. It's an even harder job now. And I want to just take a moment to say thank you to every single principal in the Verina District. Also, each principal in my district will receive just a small token of appreciation from me, along with the Kindness for Kate organization. If I had a million dollars, I'd split it. Because I understand that leaders is what it's going to take for us to continue to be successful. So I just wanted to just publicly share that. And principals, you should be getting this little token over the next week or so. So with that said, this is the time for Q and A. This is that time for open mic. I don't know what you're feeling unless you share it with me. So if there are any questions or comments, I'll take them now.
Mrs. Atkins, we have a fourth student, Akeah Jefferson, who has signed up to ask you a question. So Akeah, you are on deck. Be sure your mic is unmuted and ask Mrs. Atkins your question.
I have a few questions, actually. One of my questions is like, when does the school day actually start? And how many hours are these children supposed to be online?
That's a wonderful question. What I'll do is, I want to share something with you. Is this guide here, I don't know how clearly you can see that from your screen, but this is Henrico County Learning Plan. When you open up the plan, you're going to see some sample schedules. And let me share with you why they're sample. Because once our teachers get in the classroom, they're going to have a better understanding of the uniqueness of their students to be able to give innovative learning, illuminate knowledge. And that might shift some of the things that you see on the page. But here's what's real. This is a great sample for you to use as a guide. If you have a chat that is in middle school, for example, the day starts at 8:30 and ends around 3:15. It's going to show on here how much is lunch, which is about 30 minutes. So I will ask you to really take time to go to the Henrico County Public Schools website. Look for this learning plan. I believe it's the first thing right at the top. And when you open it, you're not only going to see what the schedule will look like for a middle school student perhaps at fourth or Elko. You're going to get more information about English language learners, special education, integrated services. So please use this resource to help with that question, what does a day look like? And having understanding that that day may change based upon the unique needs of the classroom. And that's really important to understand. That was the second piece of your question. Do you mind sharing?
Um, yes. Um, my other question was, when are we going to train? Are we going to wait until September the 8th to train these children?
I think you broke up a little bit, so I didn't get the other part of the question.
A week, a week, at least before school, where you take at least three days to train these children.
So the question is, are we going to provide training on some of the applications like Schoology? Before school starts on September 8th? Dr. Cashwell, I'm going to ask you to come up and help answer that question.
Absolutely. First of all, know that on the first day of school, through the first weeks of school, through the whole first nine weeks, our teachers are going to be helping our students understand how to access material and learn how to use it. But in advance of that, know that as your school releases your own child's schedule and your own assigned teacher, the elementary assigned teachers will be reaching out to students and families just as they plan to orient you to an in-person year. Secondary school schedules and things will go out. And there will be tips and resources to help you know how to get online, where to find your information. And especially for students who are brand new to Henrico schools. If you've been going to Henrico schools and you're a secondary student, you probably know how to log on to Schoology. And you have your device and you're used to using that. We know that it's new for many of our students. And so our teachers and our schools will be helping with tutorials. We'll post lots of tips as well for you to access. But know that even if on the first day of school on September 8th, you're not sure what to do, contact your school, contact your teacher. But you're going to be logging into Schoology, logging into Microsoft Teams to meet your teachers. And many of you will have a chance to do that long before the first day of school because teachers are setting up meet and greets to help walk their families through the procedure.
Okay. Did that, did that answer your question?
Pretty much, yeah.
Fantastic.
Mrs. Atkins, we, our next question comes from Karen Lyons. So Karen, if you'd unmute your mic and pose your question to Mrs. Atkins.
Hi, Ms. Atkins. Far as with my question, my concern is my daughter is coming from a pub, from a private school setting. And this is her actually first year into private, I mean, public school. So with me, I'm totally not aware how public school works, how it function. It will there be something set up for me where I can talk to someone to get some guidance on my end? Because right now, all she just has is a laptop. I looked at it last night, but I don't know how it works. I don't even know how I'm supposed to get her grades. Like, I'm totally lost when it comes to the public school setting. So it's just like, I'm coming into this blindsided with virtual. And it's like, I'm sitting here just like, what am I supposed to do? And everybody's saying, well, don't worry, you're going to have contact information, somebody's going to contact you. But I feel lost. So what is going to be for the parents who are coming in, who are bringing their child from a private school into the public school setting?
Well, I'll tell you, you know, listening to you, if I were in your shoes, I would also be afraid. So the first step is acknowledging how you feel and doing something about it. And you're doing just that. The second piece is, you know, understanding a whole new culture also takes a little bit of time. And I also think that, you know, as Dr. Cashwell alluded to earlier, there are going to be some efforts in advance of September 8th to include your teacher contacting you and your student. So I would also express that the same information you just shared right now with that teacher and let that teacher know that your child is coming from a private school setting and you better, you want to better understand the culture along with the academics that are in play as well. And so as long as you're having that open dialogue with that teacher, with your child's teacher, that's going to help. So if you're wondering to yourself, okay, Mrs. Atkins, okay, that's September 8th. It's August 20th. I want to know more now. I want to do something. I don't want to wait until September 8th. That's a valid point. There are some things that you can do to help you understand Henrico County's culture. I will tell you again, if you just go to the Henrico County Public School website, there's a plethora of information for what's going on right now. But there's also information on there from the past. To give you a better understanding of what we do, I would also implore you to go back to look at some of what we did for graduation, even though it was virtual. It'll give you a better understanding of how we shift, how we're innovative, the leadership that engaged to make things happen. And so I think that will help understand the culture, the place that your child will be learning from, you know, come September 8th. But as a mom, when you want to know ahead of time, you know, it's a feeling that you have that is hard to describe, but you do know that I want something now. I want to know more now. And I really do believe if you go to the Henrico County Public School website, you'll see a plethora of information there. You'll also see what I showed before that learning plan. I think that that will help you. I also will share with you this health mitigation plan. Because that might come across your mind as well. So in a private setting, they have plans too. But in a public system setting, there is some information in here that's going to help you with some of your questions that are COVID-19 related. And so when we're thinking about culture, we're also thinking about how do we respond to certain circumstances? So this also would give you some guidance on that. If you have questions like, what happens if a staff member is COVID-19 positive? What happens next? Open up the book and you'll see that there's some information in here that provides more information on what Henrico County will do if someone is COVID-19 possible, positive. As well as some things around what we are required to do from CDC, et cetera. I hope that was helpful. Another tip I'll give you, another great way to learn more about your school system is to talk to neighbors or people that you know that live in your community. And have conversations with them about their experience in Henrico County Public Schools as well as their children's experience in Henrico County Public Schools. I'll also invite Dr. Cashwell, just in case she has some guidance on, if you have a child coming from a private setting to a public setting, what are some things you can do right now?
I think Mrs. Atkins covered it really well. But in addition to the school website, the school divisions website, going to your child's assigned school website, so the actual school that your child will be attending, go to that website. Also stay tuned. Once you've registered, you should be on the list for emails from the principal and other communication that comes. If you're like most families, you're incredibly busy. We know that. It's easy to miss an email. So check the website every now and again. I know that our principals at all levels, elementary, middle, and high school, are creating orientations for students who are brand new to Henrico schools. So if you're coming from private school, you're coming from another county school system, another state, we've got to cover. We know that transitioning in means learning new things and new routines and a new culture. So we want to be able to help you get acclimated to Henrico County before school starts. So stay posted.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Next question.
Mrs. Atkins, our next question comes from Deborah Gerald. Deborah, go ahead and ask your question.
Hello, Ms. Atkins. How are you?
I'm well. How are you?
I'm doing pretty good. I just had a few questions. While looking at the plans, I was just wondering, when the plans were made for the students, were, were anybody, like any companies or consultation made like outside of the district? Or it was all everyone inside of the district making the virtual plans? And also, I am concerned about how long it's taking for the schedules to be released to the parents. Because I know for my students slash my children, it takes a lot of time for them to actually get on a schedule to get it done. And one of my main concerns is that if I don't know ahead of time what they're supposed to be doing, my kids are pretty slick. They will look me in the face and say, Mom, I did it today. So I think it's, you know, really important for the parents to be aware about what the expectations are so the accountability can be held by their kids. And also, I just wanted to see the thoughts of the differences between what was considered for virtual compared to the traditional learning? Because I'm having issues with trying to figure out like, what's so different about virtual compared to the traditional? Because it seems to be like, just from my opinion, in my viewpoint, that the same traditional things are used in the virtual platform. It's just, you know, going out, but it's a lot of other factors, you know, just to be considered while you're putting things, you know, virtually to students.
Well, thank you so much for your question. They are great questions. So the first question really revolved around, how did we come up with this learning plan as a school system? There are several pieces to this puzzle that made this puzzle come to life and move forward into fruition. So there were individuals on our division leadership team, which worked with staff to help come up with the learning plan. There are also focus groups, I believe, that helped with this plan. There were surveys that went out as well to better gauge and get more data in figuring out this plan. And I'll also share with you, some of the things that we were able to do was also dictated from a health perspective, from the CDC, right? The Centers for Disease Control, they also have some leverage in things that we can and cannot do from a health mitigation or a risk perspective. We also had some obligations from the Virginia Department of Education as well. So we had to create plans that were accepted. That's the best word I could use. That were accepted by the CDC, accepted by the VDOE. And I'll say those out, the Centers for Disease Control, along with the Virginia Department of Education. We also wanted to make sure that we have to work with our partners in Henrico County from a budget perspective. We have to have the money to implement certain things as well. So when we're looking at things like hotspot, that was a partnership with T-Mobile. When we're looking at laptops and maintenance and making sure that we have staff to better give instruction as well. So that's the answer to your first question, which was, what really went into coming up with this, you know, coming, bringing this learning plan into fruition virtually? The second piece of that question, I believe, was around schedules. You are concerned with how long it's taking to get your child scheduled. I understand. I am a mother as well. I'm a mother of three with two that are currently enrolled in Henrico County Public Schools. I can share with you that this is our first time. This is Chesterfield's first time. This is Hanover's first time. This is Richmond City first time. This is Virginia's first time, moving forward in such a way under these challenging circumstances. And so it does take time, especially when we want to get it right the first time. We know mistakes are going to be made because we're still learning. And so while that answer doesn't feel good, it's better to be honest and candid and tell you, we're doing the very best we can to get these schedules out as quickly and promptly as possible. we're doing the very best we can to get these schedules out as quickly and promptly as possible, but there's no template. So what we're designing, what we are illuminating, what we are creating, sometimes just takes time, especially when you want to try to get it right the first time. Dr. Cashwell, did you have anything to add? Okay, fantastic. And I believe the third question, um, please help me, uh, keep me honest if I got the third question right. I believe the, the third question was, was around your children and the schedule as well. So I'm feeling a little bit fuzzy. Do you mind sharing that last question with me as well?
All the parents, I think I remember.
Okay, Dr. Cashwell is going to take that one. I, I couldn't remember.
Uh, well, I had the benefit of still thinking of the question while you were giving a great answer. So, um, we can tag team that one. I think your, your question was, you know, when are they going to get the schedule so they know what to do? But how can you as a parent monitor that deadlines, due dates? You were concerned that, you know, kids can be slick. I think that was your word. And, uh, you know, you might not necessarily know how to assist them in complying with deadlines and all those things. So, uh, we will be using Schoology. You can create a parent Schoology account that will allow you to track some of those things as well and you can view it. We have a great video already on our site where you can, um, go and create a Schoology account if you don't already have one. Um, and Power School allows you to see grades as well. So you're going to want to go in and get yourself set up on all of those. Um, and if you are experiencing difficulty, uh, there's an email you can contact. We have a hotline. But there are some great videos to help you get started with that as well. Um, and again, as I said, don't ever hesitate to reach out to the teacher. Uh, if you're concerned that your child's not meeting deadlines or isn't, um, her, understanding the schedule or what's, uh, expected, please don't hesitate to reach out, um, directly because, uh, we are here to help. And we are getting those schedules out. I think by next Friday, we've made the promise that all high school schedules will be out. So for some reason you don't receive it, um, please contact your school directly.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. And I want to make sure that that, that our responses answer your question.
Um, as far as the schedules, I was, um, referring to the schedules in which my, uh, daughters have to participate and engage in the classroom, like with the small groups, uh, when they're supposed to be doing independent work, not necessarily their actual schedules with the classrooms, um, listed. But actually what are the expectations of the teachers as far as engagement is concerned? Um, so I'll know they're be there because, you know, uh, they may be looking at a clock or be wandering around or even talking to each other because they're twins. And they might, you know, be required to be in class. And then, you know, next you know, they're missing their spot. Um, and then also, uh, my last question was about like, how is the virtual different from traditional? Cause it, you know, just me on the outside, it just seems like they have the same demands, but at a distance. And with some online programs, um, that some students use that I have seen, you know, the format sometimes is quite different than the ones that is being presented. And that's why I asked about, you know, who was involved as far as planning, you know, the instructional schedule and not so much the student schedule.
I'm going to allow Dr. Cashwell to answer that for you.
Uh, I hope I, I'm hitting on the answer here, but, uh, certainly we know that elements of this virtual day do mirror the traditional day. And the reason is because we're hoping to get back to school in person. And while we're not able to be in person, we're trying to replicate as much of that, uh, for a transition purposes so that as we're able to transition back in the classroom, things like the classroom schedule, the hours that we follow for the school day will be very similar for students. Now, of course, some of the teaching methods teachers may be using may be a little bit different. We might rely a lot on video and some other applications, um, through the, the virtual learning, just like you're here at this meeting. But it is meant to mimic the traditional school day on purpose. And so we relied on the expertise of our school administrators, our, our, that'd be our principals, assistant principals, our teachers, um, and, and division leadership, and we looked at other models for virtual learning. Um, not necessarily that we're out there for the pandemic, uh, but to see what those best practices were so that we could mirror as many of those as we could, uh, for this, uh, experience for your students.
All right. Thank you so much for, for your questions. I really appreciate it. And folks, I'll just remind you again, if you do have questions, feedback, comments, uh, to sign up to speak, you have to use the link in the chat box. All right, let's get it.
Well, Mrs. Atkins, we have nine participants, um, that have joined the meeting this evening. Um, right now, we don't have anyone lined up to speak, so to, so to speak, excuse the pun. But, um, I'm sure that we have folks that have, would like to share some comments or maybe have a few questions, even if they didn't sign up. So we'll just open the floor, um, and, and we'll try to make this as organized as possible. Maybe visually raise your hand and say, I have a question before you start to ask your question. Yeah. So there is an icon at the bottom of your screen also that you can raise your hand to ask a question and, and we, we can surely use that. I see that Ken White, uh, principal at Highland Springs High School has signed up to ask a question. So Mr. White, please, I'll go ahead and ask your question.
Uh, good evening, everybody. Can you all hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Um, I, I didn't, I didn't want to, and I just wanted to, uh, provide a comment. Uh, first off, Ms. Atkins, thank you so much for setting this, uh, up for us and being able to do a town hall meeting together. Just wanted to reaffirm, uh, what's been said tonight, our work and our team. And everything that we're doing, we're doing everything we can to ensure you guys have what you need, especially when we're in town. So as we look to work harder for you all, our teachers are in, are working hard. The school board has made a, a decision to really support us. They are doing the best job they can and we all are doing the best job that we can. Um, it was stated earlier that we, this is a learning experience and it truly is. And we're not going to get everything right. We're going to do the best job we can to meet the needs of all of our students. And as long as we have the family, we have the support, our, our school board, our parents, our students, our teachers, we will get this together. So I just wanted to, uh, throw that out there again. Ms. Atkins, thank you so much for your, thank Cashwell for your, thank you too. So I do see on my aides, I see Dr. Loving on the call. I saw, um, Mr. Thompson on the call as well. So I definitely appreciate it, Tommy, but we just, you guys know that we're here to support all of our, all of our students, all of our parents, all of our families. We got your back. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Dr. White. Uh, it's so important that when I say it's going to take a team to get this right, um, it really will, you know, from top down to bottom up. It's going to take everyone, uh, to ensure the success of our students. Are there any questions?
Yes, we have a question that John and Robyn dropped into the chat box. So we're just going to go ahead and pose that for them. They're wondering if students will be required to wear masks when they return to school, to the school building.
So it really depends upon where we are while we're moving through these nine weeks. So as I stated earlier, there are many pieces to this puzzle. It depends upon our governor and where we are with our COVID-19 cases. He could reverse and move us back to phase two, or he could move us forward. And so it's really too soon, and I'll ask Dr. Cashwell to come up, uh, so she can keep me honest. Uh, it's really too soon to answer that question because we really have to spend some time seeing where we are as a county. Um, and with our COVID-19 positive cases, we also know flu is coming up, so flu season is coming up as well. So it really is going to be dependent upon where we are as a county and the directives that we get from CDC, VDO, VDOE, along with the governor. Dr. Cashwell, did you have anything to add?
Thank you. Well, I think as, as Mrs. Atkins stated, this is a, an ever, a ever-changing situation. So I'm going to give you an answer that's current as of today, um, for now. But yes, our health mitigation plan as it stands today requires that if visitors come into our building, if staff come into our building, or students come into our building, that they are wearing a face covering. So that is a requirement right now. So, um, while we are learning predominantly virtually, there will be some students who may come into the building for appointments, uh, to meet with their teacher or some one-on-one instruction that I mentioned earlier, a face covering would be required, um, as well as on the school bus. So physical distancing of three to six feet on our buses, distancing inside our classrooms along with the face coverings is part of our protocol right now. And we imagine that unless conditions change drastically, we may see less community spread. The data may allow us to bring more students back in the buildings. But we imagine that for a while, these health mitigation strategies to reduce the spread of the illness will probably still be in play. So that would mean things like wearing a face covering, increased hand washing during the day, and that we'll be doing our part to sanitize surfaces frequently and regularly inside of our buildings as well.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Let's see, are there any other questions or feedback?
We have Koon Tal Shaw, and if I am not pronouncing that correctly, I apologize. But he has a question about the Chromebook.
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, uh, we just got the Chromebooks for our two kids that are in elementary school. And, uh, when we log in with the username and passwords, um, it just, it does take us into Schoology, uh, Google OneDrive and, uh, Clever. But the question I have is, uh, when I, when, when we do that, we get a, some type of another pop-up that comes up all of a sudden, asking us to log in again. And we, when we enter that information that was provided to us, it does not work. It just gives that pop-ups comes on and, uh, it, it, it just keeps coming and you have to hit either cancel like 10 or 15 times before it will let you, um, log in to Schoology or whatnot. So my question is, do we have to go to the technical, um, center or the, or the technical hub that is at the, uh, secondary schools and get it looked at over there?
So you have a couple of options. Um, you can visit the tech hub. You can also, uh, call the hotline. And so we'll put, um, both, the information for both of those in the chat box. So again, and that's not just for Chromebooks. If your child has been, has received an iPad, a Chromebook, a Dell laptop, and they are having issues with it, I also, I'm going to add to that, if your child has received their new technology, their new equipment, parents, go ahead, open it up, test it out, go to Schoology. Go ahead and figure out and let your child have an opportunity to also experience it now instead of, you know, waiting closer to September 8th. And if you experience any issues with it, again, you can contact the hotline or you can also visit a technology hub. But it's going to be imperative that, uh, we get our kids, um, comfortable using these devices. And as parents, making sure that the devices are working for our kids. Thank you for your question. Did you have any other questions?
Uh, yeah, just one, yeah, go ahead. Go ahead. I, I'm sorry, go ahead. I apologize. I just had one, one question is, um, is, is it the same for like the, um, the vape cam or the camera that is currently, um, configured in the Chromebooks? Um, if you click on it, it does not open up like, you, you know, typically when you click on a camera, you would see your face. Um, that does not happen. So maybe the camera is blocked by the Henrico County policy or it will be unblocked at certain period of time that, that was, I was just wondering that, what to do about that.
I, I still would encourage you to use that phone number to contact the help desk or visit a technology hub. There are a couple of reasons why that may be happening, and I am not an IT person. Uh, so I'd rather you get the advice, you know, from someone who's an expert. So again, use, you have that information out the chat box, allow them to help you. And parents, again, this is a critical key, that the, without the device, your child can't get the instruction. Let's go ahead. If you've not picked your device up, pick it up. If you need help with transportation, we have a face team that may be able to help you. Let's get these devices in our kids' hands so that they can start feeling comfortable with them. And as parents, let's make sure that we check these devices and make sure that they work. We don't want to wait until September 8th and it's not working, or you don't want to wait till closer to and there's an extra long line. So let, let's get to work. Let's make this happen.
All right, Mrs. Atkins, we have a few, a few people that I think would like to ask a question. But I just wanted to take a moment and to remind everyone that our team is also dropping some, uh, some very helpful links to, uh, information and some of the pages on our website that have, um, many of the, um, are, are addressing many of the questions that have been posed this evening. So be sure that you're checking that chat box and that will be a, um, a quick, um, link to the resources that may be very helpful for you and your family. Um, right now we have Hattie Crowley that has her hand up to ask a question. And then we have Barbara Wendell. So Hattie, um, go ahead and unmute, mute your mic. And Barbara, you are on deck to, to follow.
Thank you. Um, good evening all. I just wanted to, just, you know, kind of follow up what they're saying. I'm a part of that face team. I am a family advocate at Glynnly Elementary. So I implore you all to get to know who your family advocates are in your school. They can help you with a lot of these questions you have, lead you to the right persons, give you those numbers and all. So as you call the school, find out who your family advocate is. They can definitely help you through this time, through this school year. That's all I wanted to share. Thanks.
Thank you so much for sharing that. And I'll also just share that there are a lot of educators, staff members, um, on this town hall. And they're on this town hall to listen and learn and share as well. I'm going to say it again, we are all in this together. And this is a great example of that. So thank you for sharing that information.
All right, Barbara Wendell, you're up next. Barbara, are you, if you're speaking, your, your microphone is muted.
And Dr. Cashwell said that was probably going to be one of the most popular things said in 2020. And it is.
I think we can hear you now. Go ahead.
Okay, I, I'm just asking, I know that it's probably looking too far into the future right now, but we have a grandson that's in the eighth grade this year and he's been looking forward to picking a center and applying to them. And is that going to be something that's even going to be allowed this year or is that off the books for this year?
I'll let Dr. Cashwell handle that from the operations side.
It, it is. It may not mean you're visiting in person and getting a tour in person or attending an information night at the center in person, but there will be ways to, um, still gain information about the centers and go through the application process. So absolutely that piece of it's still intact. It just may look a little different.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we have Gretchen Horke, who has her hand raised. And Gretchen, if I, if I messed up your last name, I'm so sorry. Please correct me and state your name correctly, but go ahead and ask your question.
Hi, thank you so much. My name's Gretchen Ute, and, um, I really appreciate this opportunity that we can listen and ask questions. Um, Ms. Atkins, I just want to, if we could back up on, um, the computers and if I could ask you a couple of questions in regards to the computers. You mentioned something about teams to help students with getting their computer. Can you tell me a little bit more about that?
So if you're referencing Microsoft Teams, that's just one of the applications that many instructors will be using. Um, so I'm not sure what you're referencing when you say teams.
So I, I might be confused. Are there, um, like, um, to assist with students getting their computer if they're not able to get to the school to, to pick up a computer?
Fantastic. And the answer is yes. So in the chat box, there should be more information about our tech hubs. We have four in the Verina District, it's Highland Springs High School. Also, there's a phone number, um, that you can call as well. And, and we'll try to get that phone number in the chat box too. So if you discover, um, that there's something wrong with your, your technology, your device, please, please, please explore one of those options. Um, you know, if you can't get to a tech hub, call the phone number. If you can get to a tech hub, go to that tech hub. I believe the hours are going to be expanded for next week. I'm not entirely sure. Dr. Cashwell, is that correct? So, so the hours are going to be expanded next week. So you'll have more opportunity to get to the tech hub. Also, when you call the line, they may even ask you, uh, to bring your device to a tech hub. But the good news is if you're in that moment and you notice something is wrong with it, at least you know you can just pick up the phone and get some guidance on what to do next. And you have another question?
Thank you very much. Yeah, that, that's all. Thank you.
Oh, my pleasure. Thank you for your question.
Once again, we just want to remind everyone that we are posting links in the chat box. Once again, we just want to remind everyone that we are posting links in the chat box that will help you with your Power School accounts, your Schoolology accounts, and information for online services and the help desk. So just be sure that you're looking at those and accessing those, and those will help point you in the right direction. And of course, as has been shared earlier this evening, the faculties and staff members at each school are available to assist you and point you in the right direction also. And I know we have a lot of principals and other staff members that are joining us this evening, so if you would like to share some thoughts and some inspiration for our participants, and maybe some guidance on specific areas, feel free to jump in and do so.
And while wheels, wheels are spinning on questions and feedback, I'm going to, a question that I get quite often is around nutrition and our grab and go sites. And so you will be able to still pick up your lunches as, as you would, you know, if you were in school. The piece that we are still working on is whether you can use your debit card or not. Soon as I have an answer for that, and I'm pretty sure that information will be communicated as quickly as possible. The other question was, how do we know what's going to be in the meals? And so there is a calendar, I believe, on our county website that will share with you what the meal is going to be for the day, just as our students learn if they were in the building, sometimes it's announced over the announcements, and sometimes a flyer goes home. So I just wanted to share that information.
Mrs. Atkins, we have the Smith family that has raised their hand to ask a question. Smith family, go ahead.
Good evening, can you hear the meal, please?
I can.
I was just wondering, I am in a unique position where I have a child in the, in a elementary school, one in a middle school, and one in a high school. And I have the technology I picked up for our elementary school student. Wondering if there was any idea when the laptops will be distributed for the middle and high schools?
So for middle school students, so there's, there's two. So if you have a student that, that was a fifth grader and they're a rising sixth grader, they should be able to go to their school and pick up their Dell laptop. I know this, I just recently did it with my son at Elko. It was a very easy process, it was less than five minutes. When you arrive at, at that middle school, be sure to bring that old Chromebook and their, the plugs port, and you'll actually, you'll give that to them, and then they'll give you the Dell laptop. So for middle school, you should be able to do just that. Dr. Cashwell, for high school, can you share that process?
Well, I'm, if you've already been in Henrico School, so you're, most secondary students already have one, because if they were with us for middle school, or they were with us for high school, they'll have the device they were issued last year. They kept that through the spring and summer, and that's the same device they'll be using this year. What we do want is for those secondary students, if they haven't already, to visit their middle school, or high, or high school, and get the laptop camera turned on. So that's that. But as Mrs. Atkins said, for those who might be newly registering to the district, or moving up from elementary to middle school, and you didn't have a device, sixth grade distribution began last week, but contact your school, let them know of your need, and they can let you know specifically what the right time and window of time is to pick up those devices.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Did that answer your question?
It, it did. I should have prefaced with the fact that I'm new to Henrico County, so, but thank you.
Well, welcome to Henrico County. I think that, you know, while these are certainly challenging times, I think you're going to learn specifically in the Verona District, that we are a village, and that we do work together, and that it's, it's going to be important that we share concerns, you ask questions, and also share successes as well. So I welcome you and look forward to a wonderful school year.
Up next, we have Miranda waiting to ask a question. Miranda, unmute your mic and go ahead.
Good evening, thank you, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, awesome, thank you. So I had two questions. One, I wanted to know, is there going to be some type of like back-to-school virtual back-to-school prior to school starting on the 8th, where parents and teachers can kind of get a real feel of what's going to transpire as far as the virtual learning, where we could like, just like, you know, last year, but virtually, we can go in and, you know, I guess, join the classroom and meet the teachers, and get a feel exactly how this is going to look for, especially, and, and I am the parent of a high school and middle school student. So for me, my, my questions are for each individual class change, are they going to be, do the kids have to join on their own, are they going to be prompted or automatically invited each, each period?
So excellent questions. I'm just like you, I have a middle school and a high school student. I'm super excited, we are going to do back-to-school. Let me be clear.
Okay.
We are going to do back-to-school. My voice is getting raised, because we need that level of enthusiasm. What our children see in our staff is what they're going to get. It's going to be a mirror type of approach. So our children are going to need to be reassured that their teacher's going to be there for them. That social emotional piece is just as significant as their academic piece in going back to school in this virtual way. So the answer to your question is yes. How is it going to look different from, I believe, school to school? And I'm going to ask Dr. Cashwell to come up from the operations side, because she's, she'll be able to give you more of the details around that, and also address sort of that class change, and how does that look for high school?
Thank you.
All right. Well, absolutely, as Mrs. Atkins said, we're excited, we want to orient you to the new year. You can expect that each school, the middle school or high school that your child goes to, will probably do some virtual events to get excited about the new school year, and that each individual teacher will likely reach out as well. I've noticed a, a lot of our schools are posting to their websites, virtual tours of the building. You can actually click on a classroom and see the teacher who teaches in that classroom welcoming you, giving a little video. So these kinds of things are common across all of our schools, and while they all might approach the orientation to the new year a little differently, they're all doing something to welcome you back to the new year. So stay tuned, check your school website, check emails from the school, and as we're inching our way closer, they're working hard to make sure they orient you. As for the middle school and high school schedule, you're right, it is actually, you're going to follow your bell schedule. And so when you sign into Schoolology, it knows which courses you're going to be assigned. And so the idea would be, you would navigate your schedule as you would in, in your laptop, and you will see assignments your teacher has posted, the class, assuming the class is meeting live that day, you're going to click into the meeting, and you'll be able to do that right there from Schoolology. It'll take getting used to, students will have to do some self-monitoring, get used to their schedule, they probably want to have a, a paper version of their schedule, reminders of where to go next, just as they would in the building. I guess the good thing is, if you're brand new, and you don't have to navigate a whole school building, you have to navigate your page in Schoolology. Both come with challenges, so practicing that, getting used to your schedule, will help our students through that. But definitely at the secondary level, you'd expect to enter each class link as the teachers have provided, and in your Schoolology page.
Fantastic.
Mrs. Atkins, we have, we have two speakers in line waiting to ask questions. We have Margot Kills, and we have Suzanne Ricks. So Margot, go ahead with your question. Be sure to unmute your microphone.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you, thank you.
How are you? Enjoy seeing you and speaking to you the other day. My question is, I'm the director at Laurel Hill Weekday School, and of course, you know, we also, we have after-school students, and we service multiple schools in the Verona area. My question is, we do plan to do the virtual learning assistance so that children in our after-school program can be, stay with us, as well as we can help them with the virtual learning while the parents are working. But for the faith-based childcare centers, are we able to, what, what's in place for us as far as helping to make each student, like say, for instance, you have second graders at different schools, are they all going to be on the same schedule? If they're at Seven Pines versus Mayford and Verona and Baker, how do we handle students? Do we position all of the second graders together in our facility? Or can the children use headphones, that we have limited space, we can keep all the kids together so that we're keeping our staff monitoring all the children? How should that work for us, and what is, may be available to help us plan for this?
So thank you so much for your question, particularly for our faith-based communities, and it was wonderful speaking with you the other day as well. So there's a couple of things, I'm going to answer your questions at a high level, I'll allow Dr. Cashwell, she'll come on in with her expertise and give you the more detailed version. So at a very high level, for our faith-based communities, our family and engagement team is actually working on training sessions, and they're narrowing down the date as we speak, where they're going to go in and talk about virtual learning to our faith-based communities, some things, give you some guidance and tips on PPE, also give you guidance and tips on a little bit more of what a virtual day looks like. The other piece that I want to share with you, it is important to have headphones. So for all parents, just know, you want to get your, your hands on a set of headphones. Now, this is my personal opinion, that may be different from others, so I want to preface that before I say it, but I really do believe that headphones with the muffs are better for the ears. Here's why. The younger the child is, the sound can penetrate the eardrum. And so when you push the, the earplugs into your ear, especially our babies, there is the opportunity to damage the ear. So I do employ families, again, I am not a physician, I'm a mom, and I just know that using the muffs types of headphones work better than the type that you, you know, you plug down into your eardrum. So for all parents out there, that's just something to think about. Also, you want to have your child practice with the headphones on. So if your child hasn't practiced wearing headphones, that's something else that you can do to get prepared, because it's a very different feeling to have headphones on for a conversation than it is for music. So please understand, I learned that from my own son. I learned when we were practicing this week, he can have the headphones on for hours listening to music, but then I put the mic on and I just talked into his mic, and about 30 seconds in, he was fidgetive and he was wanting to take it off. So we've been practicing, the difference between listening to music and how comforting it is, and he gets to dance in, and he's super happy, but when we practice with me talking and having conversation is very different. So we are working on building up his focus in conversation with headphones. So I hope that that was helpful. So I wanted to address headphones, I wanted to address what is Henrico County Public Schools doing for faith-based communities that need to learn more about virtual learning and getting prepared, training is coming from our FACE team led, led by Adrienne Johnson. So more information coming on that. The second question is, well, how am I going to get the information? Alicia, are you going to do another town hall? I probably won't do another town hall in the next quarter, but the way that you can find out as well is through the FACE team. So you can go to the Henrico County website and get that information. I know for Laurel Hill, St. James, Antioch, I think I'm naming all the churches on New Market Road, if I'm not mistaken. I already have the director, and I think St. Paul's Baptist Church, Martina Jones. I have these church already on the list to receive an email for this training session. Right now, they are determining whether they're going to do one in the AM and one in the PM, they're trying to figure out how to get the most out of these training sessions. So more to come. If I didn't mention a church that you know would be interested in it, you're also welcome to send me an email and I'll get them added, or you can skip me and go straight to the FACE team, contact them, and have that church director added to the distribution list. So Dr. Cashwell, I know if you had any further details, okay, so I think I kind of answered them all, but keep me honest and let me know if there's more that you want to learn.
All right, have time for one more, one more question. And Suzanne Ricks, you are waiting to ask a question, so please go ahead. Be sure to unmute your mic. Suzanne, are you there?
I think I am now, can you hear me?
We can hear you, thank you, go ahead.
Yeah, I had a question about meals for childcare centers that are monitoring the virtual learning, are we eligible to get the meals for the children, and how would we do that?
I actually think that's still in discussion, because legally, right now, you have to have a parent, I believe, to pick up the meals, and I'll ask Dr. Cashwell to keep me honest, but it's my understanding that the parent has to be there to pick up the meals. Now, of course, how is that going to work if you're, you know, faith-based, or let's say, you know, you have opened up your home to kids, and you need to pick those meals up. So more to come on that, that is in discussion right now. I have actually already had a conversation again with the, with the FACE team, just trying to understand for those families that are, are homeless or lack transportation, how does that look, how does that work? How can we repurpose some of the positions? All of those questions are into play, we have bus drivers, we have buses, but we want to make sure that we use them effectively and efficiently to make sure, one, that the meals get to, get to our families at an adequate time. So all of that is to say, more to come. And so the next question that pops in my brain, if I were you, is, okay, more to come, but when? How can I hold you guys accountable to that date? When am I going to learn more? So a couple of ways that Dr. Cashwell mentioned already. We will be updating our Henrico County Public School website often. We also have a frequently asked question on our website. I believe I printed it out, I was going to show it to you, but you'll have to take me on my word, because there is a frequently asked question, sort of list, on a Henrico County Public School site. It is actually really insightful for some of the questions that you may have. So I would say again, go to the Henrico County Public School site to learn more about the meals, how they're going to be dispersed, if you're a faith-based childcare center, if you're a person who decided to open up their heart and home, and you want to be able to pick meals up to those individuals in your home, please continue to check that website. As your school board representative, you can use me as a resource, you can send me the email that said, hey, Alicia, I'm going to hold you accountable, what's up, I need an update. You can do that as well.
We're going to squeeze in one last question from Tiffany. So Tiffany, go ahead and wrap us up with your question.
Yes, my daughter is a rising sixth grader, excuse me, at Elko. She's got an IEP that allows more gaze in her class through the read-aloud test. How are they adjusting small groups and stuff in the virtual setting to handle those types of accommodations through IEP?
Yeah, I am going to call Dr. Cashwell up for that, but I will, I will start off our response with saying, when it comes to IEP, because there are, each scenario is different, each case is different, that it really is dependent upon what's written in the instructives around the directives, and what's going to be required to ensure that that student gets quality education. So Dr. Cashwell, I'll allow you to respond as well.
Yeah, Mrs. Atkins is absolutely right. This is a, certainly, IEP teams stand ready to make decisions about what it will look like, not only in the classroom for your child to receive an education, but also in the virtual setting. So it sounds like you're making that transition from elementary to middle school, welcome to middle school. I also have a rising sixth grader, so it'll be very interesting to make that virtual transition, but you should be hearing from your school and your, your case manager, so your child should have an IEP case manager. And, and those are questions I would pose directly to the case manager, directly to your child's assigned teachers, so that you can make sure that your classroom teachers understand the accommodations, and you understand how those might play out in the virtual setting. So that's an important conversation to have, a great question, and so I would encourage that, that individual contact with the case manager and assigned teachers.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Well, that is our last question for this evening, but certainly not the last question up through September 8th, if not through Christmas. We are going to continue to have questions, there are going to be a lot, there's a lot to learn. There's a lot to celebrate. There are individuals that are grieving, there are individuals that are, you know, new to the county. We learned that today. And there will be a continuum of individuals entering our county. I say all that to say, while I don't know what specific situation you are in, I cannot fill your shoes and you cannot fill mine. But here's what I do know. I do know that we are going to get through this together. I do know that it's going to take each person checking on their neighbors. It's going to take people asking real tough questions and having an expectation of an answer as well. We will get through this together. I love who we are as a district. I love everything that we represent. We are imperfectly perfect. And I love each and every one of you. Thank you so much for joining tonight.